Calling the town council meeting to order. Will you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a few moments of silence in honor of a great Davie pioneer, Barbara McCall, who passed away last month. Barbara was very instrumental, along with her husband, in saving the Old Davie School and creating the beautiful museum that we have there now. She was also one of the founders of the Seroptimus Club of Davie, Seroptis International of Davie. And her family goes way back to the late 1890s. So, Godspeed, Barbara. Thank you very much. First order of business is the...
Mayor, can we do a roll call?
Oh, yeah, that would help. The first order of business is the roll call.[379.62][379.62](Laughter).
Mayor Paul.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Starkey.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lemack.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Holstein.
Here.
Mr. Weinfahl.
Here.
Mayor Havelcoren.
Thank you very much. The second order of business is that we, before we go into the agenda, we have staff is requesting to table the following item to October 15th. It's the variance number 12. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion to table variance to September 12th?
October.
October 12th, I'm sorry.
Fifteen.
Could we be more, a little bit more specific? Variance item number 12?
What?
Variance item number 12?
Please repeat it as I stated.
Motion to approve variance item number 12.
No, we're not approving it, we're tabling it.
Oh, tabling it. I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm just, my mind isn't...
So, for clarification, Madam Clerk, we have a motion on the table to table item number 12 variance to October 15th.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table variance item number 12 to October 15th. Roll call. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, please, roll call.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. On the consent agenda, is there anyone that would like to pull anything that's on the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Going on to public hearing. Number seven, it's a resolution. The assignment of purchase and sale contract. Mr. Weinfahl, will you read the resolution by title?
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida approving the assignment of commercial contract between JBP Development LLC and Craze Ojeda Investments, Room Number 3 LLC, to the Town of Davie, where the property is located at 4589 Southwest 65th Ave., number 1 through 2, Davie, Florida 33314, providing for sevability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to make a statement, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Are any questions or discussion from town council? Thank you. Could I have a motion?
Madam Clerk, so, I'm sorry, Mayor.[561.79][561.79](Laughter). I'm sorry. So, staff, we are requesting for revision. You should all have the revision memo. So, if there's any motion to approve, please include the revision in it.
Okay. Let me have a motion to approve number seven with the revisions.
I'll make a motion to approve number seven with the revisions.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Sorry. Number eight is a land use plan amendment. Mr. Weinfahl, would you read the ordinance by title? This is for the properties at 4890 and 5,000 Davie Road.
Yes, Mayor. In accordance to the Town of Davie, Florida approving land use plan amendment application LA 22-141 Davie LLC, amending the Town of Davie comprehensive plan by changing the future land use plan map designation to certain lands from commercial and residential one dwelling per acre to residential 22 dwellings per acre, providing for conflict, providing for sevability, and providing for an effective date. This does require a supermajority.
Thank you. Since this is a second reading, is there anybody that feels that we need to have any discussion on this? In the meantime, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak, you can come forward at this time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Sorry. Is there anybody from council that would like to? So, you all agree that, you understand, we've been through this already and you don't need to have a... Okay. Could I have a motion on this item number eight, land use plan amendment?
Motion to approve number eight land use plan amendment.
Second. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yeah.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
No.
Motion passes.
Number 15 is an ordinance. This is the first reading. The final reading will be October 15th. Mr. Weinfahl, would you read?
What? Number nine.
Number 15?
Number nine.
Oh, I'm reading the date.[726.98][726.98](Laughter). I saw the 15 above it, I'm sorry. Number nine is going to be held on October 15th. I'm sorry. So, nine is a code amendment. Mr. Weinfahl, would you read the ordinance by title?
Yes, Mayor. In accordance to the Town of Davie, Florida amending the following sections of Chapter 12 Land Development Code, Article 12 Subdivisions, Site Plans, and Certificates of Use, providing for sevability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
If there is any member of the public who wishes to speak on this, you can come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any discussion by council? Any questions? No? A motion for code amendment number nine?
Motion to approve code amendment number nine.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Number 10 is a rezoning. This is quasi judicial. Has that been waived?
Yes, Mayor, quasi has been waived on all the items tonight.
Okay, thank you. This is the second and final reading. Mr. Weinfahl, would you, Weinfahl, would you read the ordinance by title, please?
Yes, Mayor. In accordance to the Town of Davie, Florida approving rezoning application ZB 22-142 5000 Davie LLC, changing the zoning designation of certain lands within the Town of Davie from community business B2 district and agricultural A1 district to community facility CF district, amending the town zoning map to comply therewith, providing for sevability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date. This does require a supermajority.
Thank you very much. This is the second and final reading. If any member of the public wishes to speak for or against this, you can come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there anyone, any questions by members of council? May I have a motion on the number 10 rezoning?
Motion number 10 rezoning, a motion for number 10 rezoning.
What's your motion?
To approve.
I have a motion to approve item number 10 rezoning on the table. May I have a second, please?
Second.
I think you guys were equal.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey.
No, excuse me, go back. I know.
Councilmember...
It's a no.
Okay, Mayor Paul.
And I, can I do that?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Before it's finished?
Yes.
Yes, before it's finished, that's correct.
I have to be consistent, this is a no.
Otherwise, you'd have to do reconsiderations.
Yeah, I know.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And now, we're up to 11? I don't know what just, what, I got disturbed when somebody came up, so I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry.
11.
Number 11 is a variance. Mr. Weinfahl, will you read the resolution by title?
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida taking final action on various application V25-091 Berrios, providing for sevability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak for or against this, you can come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close. What's the matter? Would you like to ask a question?
I, wasn't this being tabled?
No, ma'am. Item 12 is tabled.
No.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mayor.
Where was I?
11.
11.
I know that. Did I ask, did I ask anyone to come up and speak?
You did, Mayor. I believe anyone came up, so you may close the public hearing.
I closed the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions or discussion by town council? Is the applicant here? Would you like to make a statement, or you're just gonna... This is, this is coming back again, it was... No?
Well, this is the first time.
First time, okay.
This is my first time in front of the council.
Oh, okay.
I went, I went in front of planning and zoning already to get into here.
Oh, okay, very good.
So, it's just, all we're here for is just to do a simple pool project in my backyard. We can read through the variance, what we want to accomplish. I have an odd-shaped yard, so it's why we're kind of asking for a, I guess, we're going from 12 feet to 6 feet, is what we're asking for. Or 6 feet to 12 feet, I'm sorry. So, that's, that's really all, all we're, all we're asking for here.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by council? And how did the PNC vote on this?
Approval unanimous.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or questions by council? May I have a motion for a number 11 variance?
Motion to approve number 11 variance.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, number 12 has been tabled, so this closes the public hearing portion of the meeting. Thank you very much for being here. We're passing the proclamations for Hispanic Heritage Month, which is September 15th through October 15th, and the Nova Southeastern University Women's Swim Team Day, and the University Sharks Men's Basketball Team Day. Does that mean that they're winners again?
Yep.
They took home some more titles, wonderful. Then, number 16, September 17th to the 23rd is Constitution Week. Maybe you all need to read it.
Yeah.
And 17 is Fire Prevention Week, which is October 5th to 11th. On our appointments, on the Public Art Advisory Committee, on the term expirations, do we have to do this one individually, can we do it as a group?
You can do it as a group, ma'am.
Okay. Would everybody like to reappoint their individuals for the Public Art Advisory?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, I just appointed mine, yeah.
Well, I know.
Me too.
But, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, at this point, do we need a motion?
Motion to approve the Public Art Advisory Committee as presented.
Second. One.
My mic wasn't on. Do you want me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
Motion to approve the Public Art Advisory Committee.
Second.
As presented.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Also, the Historic Preservation Board, three members have their term expired and each one wants to stay on the board. What is your pleasure?
I'd like to reappoint Brandon Herman.
I would like to reappoint Jim Moore. Someone like to make a motion to accept the Historic Preservation Board nominees as indicated in the...
Make a motion to approve as presented the Historical Preservation Board.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. We don't have any committee recommendations at this time, and then scheduling the next meeting.
Wait, Mayor. Boarding committee appointments.
Oh, okay. You had some?
Yes, I would like to reappoint to the Planning and Zoning Board David Donzella.
Oh, God. Second.
Second. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yeah.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Was that the only one that was... Okay. No old business, no new business. We're scheduling the next meeting. Do I need a motion on this?
It could be a verbal motion.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you know what I meant.
Yeah. Staff is requesting to schedule a pilot potable reuse workshop on October 15th at 4:30. Could I have a motion for that?
Motion to schedule the workshop for pilot potable reuse.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That's unanimous. That should be fun.
I love it.
Okay, now, just a reminder that October 1st, the meeting is canceled. It's Yom Kippur, it's Kol Nidra evening. Your deck to Mayor and Councilmember comments. Ms. Whitman, would you like to start? Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday is September 20th. It is our Celebrate Davie at the Bergeron Rodeo Grounds from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. This event will be honoring the spirit of Davie, a town known for being an amazing place to live, work, learn, and play. For more information, contact the Davie Parks Recreation Cultural Arts Department at 954-797-1181. Thank you, Mayor. Wonderful, thank you, Susan.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much.
I know you want to leave early, so you don't want to say anything, right?
I'm just going to let you know that I'm doing town business, the Florida League of Cities, and the Board of Directors for the State of Florida. We have some really good projects that we'll be working on, one of which is the whole thing about property tax reforms. So, we've got a toolkit that I think will be very worthy of putting out there so that our public then knows.
And I'm sure you'll give us a full report when you can return, so...
Well, we did, I did send that out. The Florida League of Cities did send it out, and the point is that we want to put those videos out so everybody understands where their tax dollars are going.
Okay. Very good, thank you. That's it?
That's it.
Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Mr. Ackerman for the information piece that he gave us, because it just comes in handy, I just, I...
Yeah, your mic's not on.
Oh, my mic's not on.
I'm going to say. For this piece that he did, which gives us information at a quick glance, thank you. I know it takes work, thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. I am looking forward to Saturday, the 20th, to be there for Celebrate Davie. I'm looking forward to that, it's going to be a good one. I'm going to be very brief, but I saw something yesterday that I wanted to share with everybody. That's something I see every day. I had eaten lunch at Geronimo, so I was headed back to my office. I'm on Orange Drive near Nob Hill, and I see a huge tortoise walking down the road. So, I stopped and I watched him, and he must have walked 50 yards down the road like he knew where he was going, and then turned off and headed back to Treetops Park. And when I say a tortoise, I'm not talking about a turtle, I'm talking about a tortoise. You know, they're, they're the big things, and they walk, and when they walk, they walk with a purpose. He was going down the side of the road, you're making time, and that's something I've never seen in Davie, never seen one ever unless he's been in captivity. And he looked healthy and happy, and I don't know where he came from, but they live up to 100 years old, so we'll probably be hearing, you know, 10 years from now, this, this even bigger turtle walking around treetops, so I thought that was interesting. I wanted to share that with everyone. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, how important it is for us to protect our wildlife, just so happy to hear that. I have a couple of things. First, I wanted to mention that October 10th marks World Mental Health Day, and there's going to be a global effort to raise awareness and support mental well-being. In honor of this, the Davie Jazz Society will host a special celebration on October 9th during the John Baptiste Musical Tour. John Baptiste is a Grammy, Oscar-winning musician and bandleader from the Stephen Colbert Show. The event will also recognize the 10-10 Class of 2025, game changers, superstars, and so forth. This would be a great positive experience, and you're invited, the community, to join the celebration, and I believe this is at the Broward Center for Performing Arts. If you would like more information, I can give it to you. And also, I think this is very exciting, Broward County each year has a Florida International Trade and Cultural Expo at the end of October, October 22nd to 23rd. And this year, the Broward Commission decided to name an ambassador from Broward County to that International Trade and Cultural Expo, and it's our very own resident, Nochelle Hastings. So, I just wanted to congratulate her on that. I'll tell her you all applauded. I wanted to thank publicly our staff, our Budget and Finance Department for an amazing job that they've done on working on our budget. You know, you don't realize, really, how much time and effort. I think they'll take a couple of weeks off, and then they'll begin the next budget cycle. We spend almost an entire year working on this process, including four community meetings, open meetings, meetings with all of our staff, and all of our departments, to get input from as many people as possible. And it's always important to know that when we have these community meetings, sometimes I get a little disappointed that only maybe 10 or 15 people will show up, and in some cases, depending on the district, maybe only two or three. But this is your opportunity, the individual residents' opportunity, to give us input. What do you want to see? How do you think that we should handle ourselves? So, I expect to see you at some of those community meetings coming up. So, this is a very, very important process that we go through, and I want to thank everybody that worked so diligently on the budget process. It was kudos, job well done, we appreciate it. Before we, I sign off, I want to wish a Shana Tova to all of our Jewish friends and neighbors for happy Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur. Mr. Lemack?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. First, I'm pleased to share that Jillian Brewster, our Assistant Town Clerk, has been appointed to the Florida Association of City Clerks, or FACC.
Wow, great.
And this, and she's on the membership committee, and this oversees statewide membership of all city clerks across Florida. In addition, Evelyn Roy, our Town Clerk, was reappointed to the FACC Legislative Committee, and the Legislative Committee monitors the Florida Legislature and keeps the Board of Directors and Membership informed of pending legislation. And with the Board's approval, the committee may also initiate and introduce legislation as well as a network to support, promote, or oppose, propose or oppose legislation before the state legislature. So, congratulations for the reappointment there. And Mayor, I just want to build off my last thing on what you were talking about, and I want to express my gratitude to the Budget and Finance Director, Mr. Ackerman, his dedicated team comprised of Colleen Ryan, Assistant Budget and Finance Director, Lucy Bernath, the Budget Analyst, Cherie Haynes-Dyer, our Budget Manager, and Arianna Daniels, our Budget Analyst, who not only meet the statutory requirements for a balanced budget, but go beyond to ensure... beyond to ensure we have a structurally balanced budget that looks into the future. And surrounding them is our talented team of directors and employees, and the leadership of Deputy Town Administrator Marciana Lewis, Assistant Town Administrator Philip Holstein, and Ms. Henry, Development Administrator, who are essential throughout the process. A special thank you, though, this year to Colleen and Bill, who during this comprehensive budget had to pause to provide a plethora of initial data to the state Doge team. This was accomplished with late evenings and weekend work, so special thank you, Bill and Colleen, thank you. And lastly, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, every year, your knowledge, guidance, and immense community awareness has been incorporated into the fiscal year 2026 budget. You have ensured every voice is heard, as demonstrated in our outreach efforts, including, as the mayor said, community forums, workshops, budget hearings, presentations, and we receiving and providing information from our community. I'm grateful for the relationship we have, and the results are seen every day among our dedicated employee, which I always say, employee ambassadors, that serve this community with pride. It's an honor to work with you individually and collectively in our transparent commitment to public service, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. I just have one more thing. You know, we have our Veterans Committee and our Veterans Breakfast. The committee is really doing some great things, and they've been setting up speakers. This past week, we set a record. We fed 120 people at the Veterans Breakfast. We had two World War II veterans present. And a nice contingent from both Korea and Vietnam. It was, it's always good to see those members of our town staff who have served and come to our breakfast as well. IT puts on a good representation. But I just wanted to announce that Marty Keer is going to be attending the next Veterans Breakfast in October, and he'll be speaking about veterans' benefits at the, at the breakfast, so we appreciate that he's coming out, our property appraiser. We always enjoy his visits. Alan, do you have anything?
No, ma'am, I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. If there are no objections, we're adjourned.